I would like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. May have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussion of attorney-client privilege memorandum providing legal advice regarding employee investigation and outcome pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1206E. That is Julie. Next, regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, October 22 at 7:30 PM in the Board of Education meeting room. This evening, I would like to use my chair remarks to welcome our student reps. You all certainly remember Brenna Akarabi, who's been with us for a year and change and started again in September. But tonight, we have Ryan Lombardi. And we know Ryan, a few things, I got to meet Ryan. A few things I know about him are the, we'll start with the law of threes. He's one of three Lombardi kids, if I'm not mistaken. He's a three-sport athlete plus DECA. And he's in his third year or his junior year of high school. So three is an auspicious number. I hope that it works well for you up here. When, when we get to the student representative reports, I'll ask you just to say a few words about yourself. Thank you. Welcome, Ryan, and thanks for being here, Brenna. With that, I'll turn it over to public comment.
Good evening. If anyone in person would like to participate in public comment, please come up to the podium and wait for the chair to recognize you. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to comment. Please note the time with the chair. Thank you. If anybody online would like to participate in public comment, please use the raised hand icon. We have no raised hands at this time.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Alan, for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for, well, it looks like the staff here are here this evening. Thank you for being here this evening. Again, welcome to Ryan. I shared it this past weekend, the beam raising at some of the schools, and it is a reflection of, of the infrastructure, the people, the commitment to education. And I'll just show you just real quickly, just the Holmes rendition of the raising of it. The kids had a wonderful time, and it's a similar event for Hinley and Royal will be on October 16th. There's all the kids and staff members who were able to write the names on the beam.
We were over at Hinley when the kids checking out something on the property when the kids were signing at Hinley. You can't tell in here, but they were so excited. All the chatter was really fun to listen to.
Oh, there's a tree.
Yeah, there's a tree.
Oh, I like the tree.
The construction workers were, I don't know, more excited than the kids actually. The appreciation that the kids gave. Yeah, we're not doing justice to this without the sign of the kids, but they've obviously done this before.
Yeah, they are.
That's fun.
Anyway, just a thank you to the community because it's great to see these buildings come to life for our students. Congratulations to 17 Darien High School students who were named or commended students in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. I think we have one sitting at the table this evening, actually. Congratulations, Brenna, and congratulations to your friends. This past Friday, I did share a communication with the community about a troubling incident that happened at the Hinley Elementary School. It happened sometime between Thursday and Wednesday and Thursday evening after school, where we had a hateful racial slur found on a playground pole. So, so no matter what the age, the nature of this type of offensive graffiti hurtfulness clearly has no place in the schools or our community. As a district, we're dedicated to fostering an environment where our students feel safe, valued, and respected, and we have, we have values and visions of the graduate and strategic plans and so on that support that. We've also done a lot of work in this arena. This is a wee reminder that we've still continued to do the work to do in the school district and the community in this particular arena. We have reached out. We work closely with different organizations such as the Jewish Federation of Stanford and the ADL of Connecticut. And we'll have one meeting today, and we'll have a meeting with the ADL actually tomorrow. So we'll continue to work. We have climate plans and so on and so forth in place in the schools. But anytime this happens, it's disturbing to say the least, and just a reminder of just the work we have to do together collectively as a community. Just a reminder to the board members, if you're so inclined to join us, there's a couple of people going to CAPE convention, and the early bird registration is October 13th. Just want to mention, last week was National Custodian Day on the 2nd, and just want to thank and shout out to our custodians who do a terrific job, particularly these last couple of years with disruptions and everything else going on. And it seems like a lot, a lot of these last couple of years from COVID and everything else in between, but they've done a fabulous job setting schools up, taking them down, resetting them up, and everything in between. So thank you to our custodians. So far, I said so good with the cell phone practices. At the moment, there's been three violations that were where off in elementary school and approximately 49 at the, at the middle school. So given the number of days we've been in school and the number of kids who are in the school, that's, I think, a good thing, and we'll, we'll stay the course. We've had our first meeting of the committee that is looking at the policy at the high school. We met this particular past week. We'll continue to meet through January with a recommendation coming to the board in January for implementation for second semester. Just like to know that the Middle School Buddy Program successfully launched last week with seventh graders facilitating lessons and trivia activities in sixth grade flex classes. Just a reminder about an upcoming meeting to our parent community, if you're listening in, the Elementary Literacy Program will be 9:30 at the Darien Library on October 16th. You'll have an opportunity to learn about our literacy program and in particular our K-3 pilot program that we're running. So if you've got questions or like to learn a little bit more, we encourage you to come along. That Tokenhead Pumping Carnival is just around the corner, October 19th. And I want to thank the PTO for sharing Mario the Magician with some of our students. I know he's gone to at least two schools, Hinley. And I'll shout out to Ox Ridge because there's a big effort to integrate all our kids, particularly our ELP kids, into all these activities, and they were able to participate in this particular activity as well. Elementary conferences are October 22nd through the 25th, and there's a few upcoming meetings for the board, the Policy Committee on the 15th, the Finance on October 17th, and Communications on October 18th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Student Representatives Reports. Brenna and Brenna.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to send a special welcome to Ryan. Welcome to the team. So excited to be working with you for the next coming year and change. But yeah, things at DHS have been running very smoothly, and we're so, so grateful. Our seniors are coming into our very first wave of college applications for many students on the 15th, which is so hard to believe it's already that time of the year. Our juniors will be taking the PSAT shortly, and we're coming into our first official set of reading days, which will be a nice opportunity to catch up and recuperate. Additionally, this is our final board meeting before the homecoming extravaganza. Be sure to get your tickets. The parents have worked so, so hard to make this a special night with lots of friends and memories and bull riding, apparently. So we'll see how that goes. Special shout out to our athletic teams. In particular, our boys soccer team had a very eventful finish to their most recent game. I think there was a winning goal in the last 20 seconds, which was incredible to see. And again, we just want to extend our congratulations to all of our teams and faculty for all of their continued effort and team spirit.
Great, thank you. Ryan?
Yeah, I mean, just going off what Brenna said, a lot of great events coming up, the homecoming. I mean, it's a great event this time of the year, and the bull ride, I'll definitely be there, but I think this is my first time here. I think I can continue to make some great changes and continue some of the great things that this board has done, and just want to keep going with the progress that this board has made.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Well, there's a challenge to the board yet.
Yeah. Okay. With that, much less fun, let's move to the approval of the minutes. May have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 24, 2024. That is Sarah, seconded by Dennis. All those in favor? That is Robin, Sarah. Oh, that's, okay, all those, okay.
Greg abstains.
And Greg is abstaining. Thank you. Unanimous with one abstention.
Yeah.
Approved. Okay. Board Committee Reports. Anyone? We haven't had a lot.
The curriculum committee met last week. We talked a good amount about what the great work that was done over the summer by all of our lovely people in the audience here. So thank you again for all of your work that you've done. And we talked about our literacy program, K-3, and edgy planet, the updates that we have done to that, and we'll have more at the 22nd meeting, a little update from that.
Okay. So the material's coming from that meeting will be presented on the 22nd.
Correct.
Great. Okay. Anyone else? Nope. All right. With that, we'll move on to presentations, discussions, and possible action, and a first reading and discussion of proposed revisions to Board of Education policies. I'm not going to read the ball. Okay, with that, I'll turn it to you, Marge, and where's Jessica? She run away? Yes. You want to take the dais? Yes, please.
All right. Well, again. So my understanding is that you would like me to walk through the way that this all works. This came about, I was here last year, I think, talking about possible changes to your vacancy policy. There were some questions about how to interpret it, and my understanding is that you've spoken with my partner, Matt Ritter, who provided some written advice that you've all received. So I can walk through that. I can answer questions you have about how your current policy would be applied. I can answer questions about any changes you might want to make to your policy, and we'll take it from there. Does that sound okay?
Yep.
Okay. So the legal framework for analyzing how you would, the question came as this, how, if there were a vacancy on the Board of Education, who would take the place of the, who would fill in for the vacant position? And your current policy talks about, has a, has a particular provision, and it says that you replace the vacant position with somebody from the same political party. And then there were questions about what that meant. So this is, these are the statutes that apply. First of all, the Minority Representation Statute 9- Connecticut General Statute Section 9-167A, which talks about the specific numbers of members that you are required to have from each political party. So you're a nine-member board, and so the most you can have from one party is six members. Okay? So that's number one. First, we look to that. You can never violate that law. The second law that I don't think was actually mentioned in Matt's email, but I did want to mention it here, is Connecticut General Statute Section 10-219. That is a law that's specific to filling vacancies on a Board of Education, and that's also the law that forms the basis for Shipman and Goodwin's model policy on vacancies for Board, Board of Educate, Boards of Education. And what that law says is, if a vacancy occurs in the office of any member of the local Board of Education, unless otherwise provided by charter or special act, such vacancies shall be filled by the remaining members of said board until the next regular town election, at which election a successor shall be elected for the unexpired portion of the term, the official ballot specifying the vacancy to be filled. So no, there's nothing about political parties in that statute. However, the important part of that statute is this phrase, unless otherwise provided by charter or special act. So then we look to your town charter, and the town charter says this. It's Chapter 2, let me just, Section 8. It says, in relevant part, when the person vacating an office, and this does apply to your board, has been elected or appointed as a member of a political party, and when such border commission is required by law to be bipartisan, as you are, such vacancies shall be filled by the appointment of a member of the same political party. So your town charter looks to the party that you were a part of at the time that you were elected or appointed. So that, the town charter trumps your board policy. Your board policy cannot take precedence over your town charter if your town charter applies. If your town charter does not apply, or if it does, and if your board policy can be read in harmony with the town charter, then you look to your board policy. So your current board policy says the Board of Education, this is the part that talks about filling vacancies, shall fill such vacancy with an individual from the same political party as the member who previously filled such position. Okay? So as Matt advised, we read that to mean the same political party at the time of, the party that the individual who vacated the position was enrolled in, not the party that they were appointed as being a part, at the time of appointment or election. So your policy looks at the party you were in, enrolled in, and the town charter looks at the party that you were elected as or appointed as. Now, how does that all play out, is the question? That's where I was, we were asked to go through a number of different scenarios. So I'm happy to walk through those scenarios if that would be helpful, but I'll pause there if there are any questions.
I don't, I think we've all had a chance to read it, so I don't know that you need to walk through, although I think if there are specific questions on either the general application or the scenarios either depicted there or not depicted there, I think it's a great time to open it up for questions. Sure, Katie?
Thank you. Thank you, Jessica, for being here. There, there have been a lot of internal emails and conversations going on about this, and it is a bit confusing, so I'm glad that you're here to clarify. My first point of clarification I want to ask you about is what was meant just now when you said that the Board of Ed policy, that that refers to the party that you're enrolled in? What, what do you mean by enrolled?
So for example, if you were appointed as a unaffiliated with any political party, but you are enrolled in the Democratic Party, then the policy would look to the party that you are enrolled in.
So, okay, so appointed, that typically happens only when there is a vacancy and the board votes for that person. Is that what you mean? That the, so for someone who is applying to fill a vacancy and the board were to appoint them?
Yes.
That what actually matters is their, their voter registration if they are affiliated with a party?
Yes. Now, the, so you can never violate the Minority Representation Statute. So presumably, if you're appointed as a member of one party, you'll have checked that box, right? And if you've checked that box, it's pretty rare to be appointed as a Republican but be enrolled in the Democratic Party, so we're usually talking about unaffiliated, right? And so if you are enrolled in the Democratic Party, but you were appointed as an unaffiliated, then your policy says, first of all, the town charter doesn't apply because you're not a member of a party at the time that you were appointed. That's why we then look to the board policy.
Okay, sorry, I'm getting confused. Are you saying that the person's registration at the time of appointment is what matters? Or that their registration later?
Well, that's a different question.
Okay, so, so you just said that someone was not enrolled in a party, even though they could be registered?
No. So I'm, the specific, there can be a million different iterations of this. So the specific issue that we looked at is if you are enrolled, we'll just say in the Democratic Party, but you were appointed as an unaffiliated, the town charter doesn't apply because the town charter speaks to the party that you were a part, that you were elected as or appointed as. But if you're not elected or appointed as a member of a party because you're unaffiliated, the town charter is inapplicable. Then we go to the board policy, which says that you have to replace the person with a member of the same political party. Then we look at what party are you enrolled in? So if you're an unaffiliated, but you're enrolled in the Democratic Party, then we would replace that person with a member of the Democratic Party unless it violated the Minority Representation Statute.
I guess the part that I'm having trouble with there is how the board would be able to appoint someone as unaffiliated while concurrently they are enrolled in a party? How, how can those two things be true at once?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. That I would have to defer to my good partner, Matt Ritter, on, but my understanding is that sometimes you have to be appointed for whatever, it can happen for any number of reasons. I, I don't know, I don't want to speak to what happened here in Darien, but that can happen. So for purposes of one's membership on a Board of Education, you might be unaffiliated for purposes of the Minority Representation Statute, right? But you might still be enrolled in the Democratic Party. And so the board policy, as it's currently written, we read it to mean that you look at the party that you're enrolled in, not the fact, not how you were appointed.
So I think we're getting to the heart of the matter now. So to clarify and sort of simplify, the, the, if a candidate person, member, if, if a person is registered with a political party, regardless of how they are elected, appointed, where they might or might not appear on a ballot item, their registration with a party is the important component that determines.
Not always, because if you're regis, because if you're appointed as a member of a party, meaning as a Democrat or a Republican, then the town charter applies. The town charter does not apply only if you are not appointed or elected as a member of a party, i.e. you're unaffiliated.
Okay. So, okay, so now we're talking about appointed or elected if you are not a member of a party.
Right, because the town charter talks about election or appointment.
Okay.
That's why I keep using both terms.
Okay. So then the determination of if you are elected as a member of a party, are, is the criteria for that solely ballot line placement? Or is there potentially more nuance that is factored into that? Say, registration of a party, endorsement by a party, campaign financing by a party?
I'm, I'm not sure I fully understand the question. I, I think I know what you're getting at, but I think that for purposes of the analysis that I'm providing, what matters is what party or not, you know, whether you're a member of a party or whether you're unaffiliated for purposes of your service on the Board of Education. So the whole, the whole question of how were you elected, you know, how, how were you put on the ballot? That's, I think, we can get back to you, but that's kind of outside the scope of what I'm talking about. I'm strictly looking at, for purposes of one's membership on the Board of Education, are you affiliated with a party? And if so, which one? Or are you not affiliated with a party? How that came to be is kind of outside the scope of what I'm comfortable talking about tonight.
I appreciate you saying that. And just to clarify, I'm not trying to be difficult at all.
No, no.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot for every hypothetical situation, and since this is a public meeting, I'll just make it clear. I am a registered Democrat. I was elected to the Board of Education. However, due to a filing date deadline that was missed, I had to actually petition on to the ballot. So I did not appear on the ballot of the Democratic line. However, I am a Democrat. I was elected to the board. Recently, it has been suggested by a board member that I am, and then in subsequent intensive legal emails, that I am actually an unaffiliated and would not be replaced by a Democrat should I vacate the board. Unfortunately, this is the first opportunity I've had for any direct conversation about the nuance of my situation. So again, like, I'm not trying to be difficult or propose ridiculous hypotheticals to you. It just happens to be an actual situation that we're dealing with at the board right now. And unfortunately, again, as I haven't been directly consulted, there have been a lot of confusing emails that have, you know, been portrayed and responded to with like a limited scope of what the actual situation is. So I do think that like with concerns of this policy, I don't believe that we're voting tonight, but I, I think that it is a bit complicated and confusing, given, and relevant, given that we have a current situation on the board this way. So I would, you know, hope that we can understand the specific situation that we do have in front of us before we wind up.
Yeah, so I think we do have the, the scenario in there of a petitioning candidate who is subsequently, or not subsequently, simultaneously registered with a party. I think it was covered in the memo. If you could speak to that, please.
Yeah, and so it's, the, just to be clear, the memo says that, given that you are a registered, enrolled in the Democratic Party, I understand, I actually knew before how that came to be, that you're unaffiliated. In light of that situation, the memo says that you, if you, your position were vacated, it would be replaced with a Democrat.
Oh, so that's interesting, because that was not the understanding that I had from the emails. So thank you for clearing that up.
You mean the memo? Sorry, what do you mean? Never mind, it's okay. Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple, a couple of questions. First, just to clarify, we have our existing 9160 in the packet, but we also have a drafted one. And, and the draft one has a difference in it from, from our existing one that, that makes a big difference in what, in what you're talking about, because it would take out this provision that someone who was elected while enrolled in a party but appearing on a different line on a ballot, they would not necessarily be replaced with someone in the party that they're enrolled in during their, so I just, I think it's important that we're all aware of what's in front of us. I would, and again, I know we're not voting tonight, a couple of things I'd like to understand better, either now or before we do vote on these. It's my understanding that at the state level, that the interpretation of the statute is that if you are, if you do appear on the ballot on an, a document that is not your party enrollment, that you are then, your party enrollment is not recognized by the state, and you are considered whatever you were, whatever line you were on, on the ballot. So in this case that we're talking about, unaffiliated.
Okay.
If that is the case, how do you then protect for minority representation when you could have people register, excuse me, enrolled all in one party but running, petitioning onto the ballot, and now you have nine members of one party on a board because the three who should have been minority representation candidates have now gamed the system in a way and petitioned themselves onto the ballot while still remaining registered to that majority party? So.
So the, the Minority Representation Statute looks to how are you elected or appointed to the board? Right? And so this is where, you know, Matt, Matt has a lot of insight into this, Matt Ritter. So I will just, I would probably feel more comfortable getting back to you on that, but my understanding is that whatever you are elected or appointed as is what you are for purposes of the Minority Representation Statute. As for one's underlying substantive political views, which is, I think, what you're getting at, that's a different question.
Well, to go back to what Katie was referencing in the, in the emails and the memos, it, it does say pretty clearly that if you're a registered Democrat and you petition on and you do not appear on the Democrat line, then you have now, in the eyes of the state, basically lost your enroll, the, the state does not recognize you as a Democrat. You are now seen as a you, even though you are and will remain registered to that party.
I think an example of that, Jessica, if I'm not mistaken, is what we see in Hartford or Bridgeport.
Yeah.
Right? Maybe you could speak to that, where you actually have members of arguably a single party but representing different parties because of how they're running, right?
I, unfortunately, I apologize, I really can't speak to that. That really would be my partner, Matt Ritter, who has expertise in that. Okay. I don't want to lead you astray.
So our options here as, go ahead. Go ahead.
I just had a quick question following up on the Minority Representation Rule, as you mentioned it, vis a vis our relationship with Hartford. If we right now are constituted as 6-3, if that number changed, we became 6-3 the other direction or 5-5, do we receive less funding or we receive more funding if the composition was different?
I, I don't.
From Hartford?
I don't think that that matters at all.
Okay, thank you.
So our options as a board, are we to go ahead and collect a number of questions? If we think it's simple enough to simply send them off, we can send them off and request another memo. We could invite Matt to the Policy Committee, or we can call a special meeting as, as a board. He is not available, he was not available tonight, or he's not available on the 22nd. So those are a couple of different options. So I think we continue to talk for just a few minutes, see where we can get to. Hopefully, we can get to a fairly simple list of questions, but if not, Plan B and C would be to have, you know, invite him to an interim.
invite him to an interim meeting for some additional debrief. Okay? All right.
Sure.
All right, so. Yes.
So I guess the question is, are we comfortable as a Board with the revised 9160 that's in the packet? With paragraph four, with that first sentence being struck, with the understanding that if there were scenarios presented, that that's how we would fill them? Right? I mean, is that, that's, it's really paragraph four that is the sticking point on this policy?
All right. Now, go ahead, Marge, can you talk about what's in 9160?
Well, the last iteration was to get to shipment and Goodwin's model policy. So that also does involve paragraph one, because that's where the language, unless otherwise provided by charter, provided by Charter or Special Act. So if we do change the language in paragraphs one and four, then you get to Jessica's scenario where we would no longer be looking to the party of enrollment.
Right. So I'm happy to talk about what this might mean if you changed it to this. So now you've, somebody mentioned correctly that now you've taken away the provision that's in your current policy that says you look to enrollment. And what this says, which is consistent with what I read to you before, section 10-219, this says that basically you go back to your town charter, which looks at the party that you were affiliated with at the time of election or appointment. It becomes difficult if you're unaffiliated, because that's not a party. So then what do you do? And I think this is where we were last year.
Yeah. So in the scenario, though, that we were provided with it for a unaffiliated who is also registered unaffiliated, I think Matt was arguing that we would consider unaffiliated a party.
Correct.
Right?
He did say that, yes.
Yeah. So. Then based on that, Jessica, if we were to strike that provision, I think of the Board filling the vacancy with an individual from the same political party as the member who previously filled such position, the only instance where that would matter, because the, am I correct? The only instance where the town charter does not subsume would be the instance of a petitioning candidate. Again, not a candidate running for another party. So not a candidate running for working families with a, a Republican, Democrat, Green Party personal registration, but only in the case of a petitioning party where you have kind of a political party, but not exactly. That's the only case where you would have this, fill the vacancy with an individual from the same political party as the member who previously filled such position would kick in.
Right, because the point that I was making earlier is that if you're unaffiliated, you're not a member of the party, so the town charter doesn't apply. And when I talked to Matt about this, the way that he got to reading this policy as looking at enrollment rather than what party you're affiliated with at the time of election or appointment, is he said whoever drafted this policy back in whenever must have looked at the town charter and made a deliberate decision not to include the words at the time of election or appointment. So therefore, that must mean it looks to enrollment. And to your point, that this would really only come into play if the town charter doesn't apply, because you're not a member of a party. That's, so that's right.
Is everybody under, go ahead, Julie.
I guess I would like to understand also, and this is for next time or however we're going to follow up on this, the difference between being a candidate who gets put forth by the Libertarian Party or the Green Party, but may also still be registered or enrolled in, in one of the main parties? I'd like to know what that looks like, that. And I would, I just, I can't reconcile how comfortably we switch from talking about, we're gonna use U as a party and treat it like it's a party. And then in the next sentence, we said, but we can't, because being a U just means that you're not a party, so you get kicked back to, to step one at that point. We were flipping and flopping in a way that isn't making sense for me. And I'm struggling with putting it all together because of that.
So let me address your first question, and then I'll try to address your second question. If, if you were a member of a party, then I think it's almost simpler, because the town charter would apply. And so then the town charter, again, looks at the party that you are elected or appointed as. So that applies because you're a member of, of a party. The only reason why we have this kind of unusual situation is that an unaffiliated is not a party. But then to your second point, yes, I see the, there is some intellectual inconsistency, but I think what the memo was trying to do was, it was trying to interpret what you have in front of you in a way that reads the town charter and the policy in harmony that wouldn't require the Board to do anything. It would allow the Board to interpret your policy inconsistent with the town charter, consistent with all applicable statutes, and to reach a conclusion without taking any action. Now, if the Board wanted to do something different and decided, well, we want to be more explicit about how we address unaffiliateds or how we address what happens if you're enrolled one, at one point and you're elected, you know, in a different way, you could do that, but you don't have to. So again, my, my view of, of Matt's memo was it was giving you a path to interpret what you have in front of you in a particular way.
Katie?
I'm recognizing that we'll be coming back to this, and there's probably still some more clarification to have. I just wanted to sort of say that I think that it's, it's important for us to have a clear understanding of all the components, the town charter, the state statutes, and what our policy is going to be. I don't think that making changes to a policy with any ambiguity is, is a good idea. Understanding that policies are written broadly and not outlining every particular scenario, I do think that as a Board, we should feel comfortable, that we know what will happen in situations. And to that end, I also think it's very important for us to consider the spirit in which the laws and statutes were written and the spirit of minority representation. And while I understand that we have a specific case here, and I do think that that makes sense to, to understand the nuance of it, I also think that, that we're best served to think in terms of, of broad hypotheticals, in terms of majority and minority, as opposed to even, you know, our current situation and which way it goes. So I just want to make sure that, one, we're respecting nuance of current situations, and two, that we are thinking in terms of the spirit of which the statutes were crafted.
Okay, Board, so we need some next steps specifically on this policy. The two questions I have written down are, how does it, specifically, how would it look if you were registered in one party and elected as another? So, for example, if you were a Democrat and ran for the working families? Correct, Julie? That's what you were looking for? Okay. And what do you mean when you say, how does it look?
How would that play out? Again, it kind of ties into my original question, which is this question again of if, if an individual petitions onto a can, onto a ballot and, and gets elected on that line, but they are registered to another party throughout the process and as they serve in whatever capacity they serve, but they're considered a U, or they're considered a Libertarian, or they're considered whatever, what kind of impact does that have on protecting for minority representation?
So that was the question, and it's a better question for Matt. But the specific question about how does your policy apply to, you're elected as one party, but you're enrolled in another? That one, I think I answered.
Yes.
Yes.
It's the broader question that I, the bigger, kind of at the state level, which impacts us, I think, and how we need to.
Okay, so in other words.
Decide on which way to go.
Right, because if someone, because you basically want to know if someone resigns and the, the Minority Representation Statute kicks in, what does that mean?
Yes, yes. Because the way our current policy is drafted, if a person were to resign, we would go based on the party they're enrolled in. The, the way that it has been brought to our attention, the state looks at party membership, that, that person might not be considered enrolled in, in that party anymore. And so when you're replacing them, you could possibly replace them as a U, and that person might have been the party that's already the majority, and you could, am I making any sense? Sorry.
I think, I think the opposite of what you're saying is true, is that the first thing that kicks in is the town charter. So let's use working families and, and Green Party just to take it out of the realm of, if I understood correctly, if you are elected on the working party's line, but you're registered as a Green Party member, if you vacate your position, we'd have to fill you with someone from working parties, not, for working families, not from the Green Party, because of the order of precedence. Right? So as long as it doesn't violate minority representation, then the next thing that kicks in is the town charter. And the town charter indicates that it's basically where you sit on the ballot, is the easiest way to. And then the third thing that kicks in is policy, and asks if you need that additional level of specificity.
So what I'm saying is, the state now recognizes someone who's enrolled as a Democrat as a U. So when it comes to the town charter, a U is not a party, so the town charter doesn't apply.
Right.
So we would go to our policy. And our policy is currently written, says that we would replace them as a U. And the current draft that's being proposed says we could replace them with anything. And that person.
Right.
Ideologically, whatever, wasn't a U in the first place.
Right.
Who knows?
Sure.
So that's, that's what I'm trying to understand, because then you could end up having ours.
Yes, you could.
Because our majority is Republicans, you could have Republicans petitioning onto the ballot.
Yes, you could.
To be elected as unaffiliated, to have nine Republicans on the Board, which is not the spirit of what the statute is meant to protect.
Right.
So that's what I want to understand.
Got it.
Respectfully, perhaps we should have Policy Subcommittee take a look at Matt's calendar and see if we can bombard him with hypos there, and then perhaps.
He is available at Policy. So if, if we want to do it that way, we can do that. Otherwise, we have to call a special meeting. If we want the entire Board.
Just a suggestion, I don't know.
Nope, I, I think that's fine. I'm, I'm more than, are we, are we comfortable sending it to Policy?
I would, excuse me, I just wanted to ask, can you clarify Board participation in subcommittees, which they are not a member of?
Yes, technically, Board members don't participate in Subcommittee, which is.
So would you then sort of revert to like a member of the public?
Yeah.
And public comment? So I would be very interested in asking some specific questions and having a specific conversation with, with Matt. So I, I would prefer for it to come to a special meeting.
I think it might make more, I just think it might, might make more sense instead of going back to Policy and then coming back here and have other members of the non-Policy having questions and then having to go back.
Okay.
If we could do, even if it's a Zoom special meeting, might be easier.
Okay. What we can do is, subsequent to this, we can send out a doodle poll, see if we can get a special meeting up and running. We'll try our best to get a special meeting up and running. If we can't, for some reason, we'll use Policy as the stopgap. But I understand your point and yours. So we'll try to get one on Zoom at a minimum. And then, um, Policy is Plan C. And then this will come back for a second read at, at the, on the 22nd. But we don't have to vote on it if we're not, if, if we continue to have questions. So there's no requirement on the second read, although.
Certainly, at some point.
Okay? Yes, Jess, was it, did you look like you were gonna say something? Or you're just saying, get me out of here?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and your staying. Okay, so Marge, if you want to pick us up and take us through the rest of Policy, please.
Right, so with the exception of the next policy, 9320, all of the changes to the other policies that are in the memorandum are, are because of changes in the law, so they're legally required. As far as 9320 goes, shipment and Goodwin's model policy had the option to end any Board of Education meeting at 10:30. And I probably should have asked Jessica to stay, but that is an optional part of shipment's model policy, which was put in for Boards who have historically long meetings and want to rein in unruly meetings. And so the advice is, we can always, in a regular meeting, stop the agenda at any time. You can't for a special meeting. And that it's probably best to leave the meetings with no end time and deal with it that way, because we have the also unique provision that we have public comment at the end of the meeting. And so you'd be in the uncomfortable position of cutting off public comment at 10:30. So those are all the reasons that we deleted that provision in this round of changes to Policy 9320.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Greg?
Didn't we vote to put that in?
We did, well.
We voted to put it in with the caveat that we wanted some procedures to put it in. And Jessica couldn't really come up with procedures. I mean, we can take a shot at it, but the problem is the public comment. So you would, I think we need more input from you. So would you stop an agenda item right at 10:30? But then would you allow for public comment after? I mean, we can do procedures for you, but we need some input on how you want to.
I think the, it came about as a result of exactly what shipment is saying is the reason why it would come about, which is that we were having a lot of extended hour meetings.
Yes, well, I don't, you know.
We're actually not the worst, Greg.
I mean, back in the day, we used to be here till midnight. Like, we're actually doing really well.
What's the, I guess, I mean, like, it's not just the, the hours per meeting, right? It's also, we have 78 meetings in a year.
Yeah.
So you add those up, not necessarily for the Board, but for the folks who have day jobs, you know, we're causing them to be here. So we're trying to be respectful of their time as well.
Julie?
I think I could maybe argue that having shorter meetings would not lead to fewer meetings. It might actually go in the other direction. If we make them shorter, we might have more. I think that what we did, we did talk about this, and we talked about the challenges of it, but the idea that we could decide that, in fact, you know, it's gotten to be 10:30 and nobody has anything productive to give any further. And so somebody wants to make a motion to move the next two agenda items to the next meeting, and you go to public comment. To me, feels more like the way we operate, because then we still have a proper amount of time to give to public comment, which I know we all protect for. But we do have some flexibility there.
All right, so the Board either needs to, not this evening, but we either need to decide that we're going to end meetings at 10:30, in which case we need to give Marge more direction, or we leave it as is.
I'm for, I'm for leaving it as is, without end time.
Without the end time.
I guess I'm still confused. So the Board voted to put it in. Did the Board, the Board vote to remove it? Didn't we all vote?
I think it came up for a read, and we sent it back for procedures. That's what happened.
We didn't, we didn't approve it.
We, we did, we did, we were interested in the 10:30. We talked about it a number of times. We got to 10:30. We spent a fair amount of time on it, Greg. But I think, I think you thought we voted. Yeah. I think we sent it back for procedures, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that's my recollection of it.
Yeah, that's what I had in my notes, too.
Yeah.
Jessica had asked to have time to look into it and the, the mechanics of how that could work with them. So that was why we didn't, we deferred it.
Dennis?
If we just simply said, no new agenda item can begin after 10:30, that's not sufficient?
If that's, if that's.
I mean, but that, but like, if we run out, if we're, if we're, we have eight items, we've gone through seven, it's 10:25, we say we can't get to the eighth, public comment. And then that's, however long that takes.
Sounds like.
For me, that sounds like a simple solution.
That sounds.
So you're saying the time cuts it off or the decision to not, to move an agenda item to a future agenda?
The time cuts it off at 10, no new, no new, no new agenda item can be brought to the table as of 10:30, unless the Board overrides said policy at that meeting, and then public comment follows.
Is that palatable? Yeah, go ahead, Katie.
I'm not in favor of implementing an end time in any form.
Jill.
Yes.
I, I'm just concerned that if we did do what Dennis is talking about, that it will just end up pushing back agenda items to future meetings. And I don't think that it will end up resolving an issue because that means that we potentially won't cover important issues that are on the agenda. So I, and I do think we've been doing better about overall, just getting out at more of a reasonable time. So I, I would like to keep it as is right now. That's my, the, okay.
Anybody else have a, a strong opinion?
I like Dennis's suggestion.
You like this, you like having it in there as something to, like a guidepost?
Shouldn't just go forever. Every other board that I've been on, the meetings have agendas with times. And that means that we should have times for the agenda items. I think that's also appropriate.
Okay.
It keeps, it keeps the use of the time efficient.
Efficient.
We don't just go on and on.
Yep. Okay. For the moment, since we're not voting tonight, Marge, can you ask them to draft what it would look like? Something along the lines of what Dennis is describing? And then we'll have that prepared for the next board meeting. So we can see what both, then you get something of a procedure to contemplate for the next meeting. Okay? All right. What else?
The rest of the policies are all caused by changes in the law. So they're not really discretionary. They just reflect the new law.
Okay. Robin?
Um, I did have a question just on one of the policies. It was Policy 4111, the nondiscrimination policy. And, and the only reason I'm asking is it was something about prohibiting discrimination on basis of a race, criminal history for people that might be applying for employment. And my question has to do with, how would this impact or does it impact our current hiring practices to the extent that we, you know, this is potentially student safety if someone has a criminal record? I'm just curious how that works.
Well, this is an erased criminal record. So sometimes a criminal background check will come back with something that should have been erased. And we work with the person, like if they were a youthful offender or they did some sort of accelerated rehabilitation. And we work with them anyway, because they then need to contact their lawyer to see why it wasn't erased. But this wouldn't affect anyone with an outstanding criminal record.
Okay, and we do do background checks as part of our, oh, okay. So this does not change any of that. And, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you all. There's any other.
Jill, I'm sorry, can I just clarify one thing? Marge, you might be clear on this, but on 9320, are we going back and looking at ending at 10:30 with a vote of the board? Or that it would automatically end at 10:30? Because that was one of the discussion points, was how we would decide whether or not to continue or to finish.
So I thought we were going Mr. Maroni's section, that no new agenda item could start after 10:30 unless the board voted to extend that deadline.
Was that the voting piece? Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
No, I'm glad you clarified.
Thank you.
Good.
Katie.
Sorry, just to clarify, though, that before you go back to Policy and draft this again, by my count, I heard, I heard three people say that they weren't in favor of an end time. And I heard three people say that they liked the, the proposal that Mr. Maroni put in. So there are two other people here, at least. Like, I'm just wondering, before Policy goes back to this, it seems that we're split either way.
I don't, well, I think Marge is just going to bring us what it would look like. But, and then people decide. But yeah, are we, we're missing a, one voter. I'm, I'm not ready, I'm not voting right this minute.
I didn't mean voting. I simply meant that, that we were essentially kind of asking Marge to go do more work on an idea. And I was just wondering if there was more than three people of the board that supported ordering that work.
Well, I think it gives, I think it gives the board the opportunity to contemplate what it would look like with a procedure, which was the nature of the original discussion. And then the removal. Brenna, go ahead.
I think just a point of consideration, student representatives are not comparatively at these meetings often. So I guess my fear would be if we're pushing items to the next meeting, that might not be inclusive to student voice and student input on those agenda items. I know that many of them don't directly correlate. But I mean, as we've seen a lot, well, all these changes, all these policies enacted do come down to students at the end of the day. And it's so important to preserve that voice and input.
Okay. Thank you. Great. All right, I think we're set. Thank you. All right. Discussion and possible action on proposed Middlesex and Darian High School field trips and field trip policy 6710 review. Um, okay, there's two components of that. First, there's the discussion and possible action on the field trips. And then I'll pass it over to Dave to just speak briefly to his point on the field trip policy.
Evening. Thank you for receiving the field trips. And just wanted to point out that these are five trips that we've seen before many times. I want to thank our wonderful club leaders and teachers and students who are involved in all of these wonderful extracurricular activities. These are very, very important to our student groups. And we would appreciate your support of these five trips. I won't go through all of them, you've seen them before, in the interest of time that we're just discussing. So would love your support and would wish our students really well in all of these endeavors.
Okay. Are there any questions about the field trips presented? They're all in your packet. No? Okay. Kate, anything to add?
No, similarly, we're putting forward, sir.
Similarly, we're putting forward two trips that we've run in the past. And we'd look forward to the opportunity to allowing our students to participate in these activities.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay. May have a motion to approve the proposed Middlesex and Darian High School field trips. Julie, seconded by Dave, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Okay. Now, Dave, thank you both for coming and for preparing materials. Dave?
Thank you. Just following up to Ms. Dunn's point, these trips, we've seen them many times before. So when I look at the policy, I see special trips, which are the ones that require board approval. Those are overnight and beyond 500 miles, including trips outside of the continental United States, which the last part's weird. But the idea is if we're seeing trips over and over and there every year, perhaps maybe the Policy Subcommittee could look at making some changes to this, that if it's an established one, it just gets approved with superintendent approval without coming to the board. Or perhaps we change the distance or the overnight. So maybe there's some changes we could make just to increase efficiency within the administration and maybe minimize board interaction on these.
Okay. Marge, are there, is there anything statutory or otherwise that we have to follow on these trips? So this policy is completely our own discretion?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Administratively, administratively, we could support these. And then just a price of board, I mean, that's an option, but.
Okay. Sarah?
We approved this policy not that long ago, February of 23. Honestly, I don't necessarily remember if there was a robust discussion about this or not. I don't, can somebody refresh my memory if there was any consideration about why we didn't change it to?
I think there was a little lull in field trips back around then. So there may have been, may not have been top of mind.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we didn't approve it for any particular reason that we're now overriding.
I don't recall any robust discussion on this personally.
I don't either, but I, I'm just making sure that there was.
Julie.
Perhaps if it goes back to the Policy Committee, that, that could get looked into. And we could determine if there were any robust reasons that it was passed as it was at the time.
Okay. So Marge, what you would do with it is just take a look then at the, the basic assumptions or the basic characteristics that we approve. We currently use to determine what gets approval and decide what makes most sense for you all. And I know, I, I guess that you would have to balance that with what, what the board wants. But maybe we could identify the different components that are, that are possible. Okay. So people want to send that back to Policy? Okay, Dave's moving. Do I have a second, Dennis? All right, any discussion?
We're, we're, this is the motion to send back the policy as Steve just outlined about the field trip.
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Jill?
Yes.
Just one question. I mean, if we were going to do that and then it just gets approved by a superintendent, I, I still think it would be beneficial, at least for the board, to be apprised of the trips and what is actually happening with these different kind of, I think they're pretty important student clubs. And I, I think it's just whether or not it takes up, it shouldn't take up a lot of our time, but I still think it's important for the board to be aware of what's happening.
What, yeah. Okay. All right, any other discussion? I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? That is unanimous. All right, thank you all. Okay. That will move to the report on testing, SAT, ACT, S, S VAC and NGSS. Thank you all.
So this is our annual update to the Board of Education on assessments and standardized achievement test. We do have at the end of this, just a very quick update on any revision to the data dashboard. It's not completely, completely complete. I know the board hasn't approved it. But if you were to look at what you would see, and with the addition of this information, we'll just show you some of the updates real quickly.
Okay.
But with that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Elementary Education and our Director of Guidance.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to be here this evening and share our student achievement data report with you. I also, our whole curriculum team is here to answer any questions that you may have as we go through the presentation. Oops. So this is our summative testing overview. And you know our battery of assessments, Smarter Balance, Next Generation, Connecticut School Day SAT, SAT, ACT, Advanced Placement, SEAL of Bili literacy. And then we will talk about our testing dates for this year. Smarter Balance is administered in grades three through eight in May. It's a snapshot of student progress in English, Language Arts and Mathematics. Students can score an achievement level of one through four, where three is meeting expectations, four is exceeds, two is near and one is below. They also receive an overall scaled scores. Score reports represent three areas of knowledge and skill within each content area. The test is computer adaptive, which means it adjusts to the students as they are taking the test. Individual score reports were sent home in, in September, a few weeks ago. We also shared a link to a presentation for parents about interpreting their students' scores, which I know people watched and we've gotten a few phone calls about that. So that was positive. Student scores, along with other assessments, provide a very comprehensive profile of student performance. Similar, the Next Generation Science, Science Assessments is administered at the end of each grade band, five, eight and 11. It evaluates student knowledge in three areas of knowledge, life science, earth and space and physical science. Again, the score reports represent students' knowledge and skill. It is computer adaptive, multiple choice, technology enhanced items and a performance based task that is more open ended and looks at critical thinking. Same thing with the score reports as smarter balance. These reports are, these assessments are part of our assessment framework. And I know I've talked about this before, but I just want to reiterate, universal screeners are administered to all students. And they tell us what students are not meeting our grade level benchmarks so that we can dig deeper. Summit of assessments, which this is part of, are end of learning. Did students learn and, and master the content expected? So chapter tests, standardized tests, final projects, portfolios. It's the end of learning. The most important for us are formative assessments and self-assessments. Formative assessment is assessment for learning, so teachers can adjust in the moment and respond to students. Self-assessment is when students are assessing their own work and setting goals, conferring with their peers. So those are ongoing and, and a really important part of our framework. This is overall district achievement of all students. And as you can see, in English, Language Arts, Math and NGSS, our performance is fairly consistent over time. This year, we also wanted to highlight, oops, I skipped a slide, I'm sorry. The achievement of our high need students. As you can see, particularly in ELA and math, there is significant improvement there. And one thing that I wanted to highlight on this slide, the state average of all students, not high needs, but all students in English, Language Arts is a 49% and in math, it's a 44%. So we are exceeding the state average even with our high need students.
Julie, would you just define high need students? Just, just.
Sure, our high need students are our students with learning differences, free and reduced lunch and are multilingual learners.
Is that any student with an IEP or what is?
Any student with an, with an IEP, free or reduced, or a multilingual learner.
Thank you.
So we're going to start with math. This is our achievement for math. And we, we did this this year with historical data. So we started with 2018, 19, the pre-COVID year, and then three years after that. So again, fairly steady performance overall. Same with middle school, grades six, seven and eight. And this is our comparison with our Derg. So you can see the Derg average and Darian. And just some takeaways and responses. Our high need students did demonstrate strong improvement, indicating successful support strategies. The math performance indicates some opportunities for targeted improvements in specific areas. And that's work that we continue to look at. We are trending toward pre-COVID levels or have met them, which is consistent with the Derg. And in five out of six grades, we exceeded the Derg average, which we are proud of. Looking forward, particularly in the middle school, we are looking at smarter balance window to see if there's a more opportune testing timeframe. We always analyze building and grade level data from the data dashboard to identify strengths and areas of growth, along with our formative and our curriculum based assessments. We analyze students particularly who scored below expectations in, in skill and conceptual domains. We continue to revise curricular units to support integration of skill work and conceptual understanding. And at all levels, we continue to embed SBA type questions in our regularly scheduled assessments throughout the year, formative and summative assessments. In ELA as well, this, this is our elementary school performance, fairly consistent over time. Oops, sorry. And the same with middle school. Some increases there. Again, our Derg comparison. We are at or above the Derg averages in most grades. So some of our takeaways, again, improvement overall in English, Language Arts, reflecting a recovery trend. High need students showed notable improvement, 4.6% growth between last year and this year, which we're particularly proud of. Grade four was the most impacted by COVID. We saw this last year with our third grade scores. Those were the students that were in kindergarten during COVID and then first grade during that hybrid year. As I said, consistently higher than the Derg. We did have a little dip in fourth grade this year. Continuing to develop our MTSS practices to support student growth. We have implemented explicit vocabulary instruction, which supports comprehension and test taking. This test taking vocabulary and academic vocabulary, strategic integration of smarter balance type questions in all of our units across the year and professional learning in assessment literacy to enhance our targeted small group instruction. So Next Generation Science Assessment, again, fairly consistent performance over time. I apologize for this. The Derg comparison, we do acknowledge that we have opportunities for growth, particularly in 11th grade, and that is something that we are continuing to look into. We expect to be at the top half of the Derg. So that's something that we're going to be working on. Overall, consistent positive trends. Scores across the grades have rebounded to pre-pandemic level. Even though we did take a dip in grade 11, those, uh, grade eight and 11 are the highest in the past three years. And we have received feedback on our shift in testing procedure in eighth and 11th grades, which has been positive, and so we'll continue that this year. Looking forward, we'll, we are going to look at our, again, our NGSS testing window to determine the most opportune timeframe. Analysis of building and grade level data to identify strengths and areas of growth. And particularly, we look at our students who score below expectations to identify trends and strand performance at the middle and high school and any sequence patterns at the high school. We are continuing to revise curricular units to support the integration of three dimensional instruction and NGSS standards. So I think probably before we go on to the high school, I can. So I think probably before we go on to the high school, I can take any questions or the team can take any questions?
Sure. I'll open it to board questions on this.
Just one question on the English, the comparison to the DERC slide. For the grades three through five English curriculum. So New Canaan consistently was scoring significantly higher than us. And as we're looking at the right-to-read and the evaluation of literacy materials potentially to augment what we're doing, have we also looked at what other DERC members might be using and how we could improve ours? I'm just curious what you've found.
We have. New Canaan develops their own curriculum based on the same resources that we're using, and they are continuing with their own curriculum. So many of our colleagues in the DERC are continuing what they're doing. Some have switched to a program, but you're not going to see anything. You probably won't see anything for a few years, actually, in terms of testing results if they're in the K through three band.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? The point on the math performance, can you give us some examples of what type of targeted improvements you're talking about? This is the SBA mathematics.
Yep. We are looking, oops, I'm sorry. We're looking at the way we instruct students in particular and the kind of tasks that we're giving them. Open-ended problem-solving tasks, which students have to explain their thinking, the mathematical reasoning. So we're really focusing more on the mathematical practices so that kids can apply those concepts. They can persevere, they're flexible in their thinking, they have multiple strategies, and they can explain their strategies. So those types of tasks.
Thank you. Greg?
I think this is a great presentation. So one question I had was just, you talk a little bit in some of the data points just around like growth year-over-year. For example, for the fourth graders who were impacted by COVID, and I think there's a comment about they're showing year-over-year growth, that cohort did. So it sounds like you are doing some tracking by cohort over time. Just give us some insight into how you think about that. Do you set targets for that cohort to say like, we need to get back to this level by this period of time? Like, how do you think about how to get them back if they're underperforming?
So I would say, obviously, we want to be, you know, we'd love to be in the high 80s. I mean, we would love to be as, have as many students as possible, meet or exceed the standards. We, the state sets growth targets for students, and our goal is to meet those growth targets. And we do pretty well, but also there's areas of growth there. It's hard to use this test as our only measure. Obviously, we want to improve year-over-year, but we're really looking at more curriculum-based student data that informs our instruction. We also look to see, does the data that we have on students align with this? Are there issues that this is revealing that we didn't know about? If a student doesn't meet goal and our data doesn't show us that, then we would do a deeper dive and be concerned about those children. But overall, I would say we don't, I mean, our scores are always in the top, like, 2% to 5% of the state. So it's hard to, you know, we always want to improve, but it's hard to set a specific goal over that.
Yeah, I was more like, obviously, fourth graders had the impact of COVID. So just thinking more about that cohort specifically, where like, it seems like based on the scores and some of the commentary that they're behind. So are we being proactive to try to get them caught up?
Oh, absolutely. And that's part of, yes. And our instruction is aligned to the Common Core standards. So targeted small group, so that we're meeting kids where they need and making sure that they are showing growth over time in the curriculum, is really what we're looking at.
If I can just add one other feature to that. So one, another thing that's really important is taking a look at these scores as they come in from the spring assessment. And then, not just looking at the cohort, that's certainly a part of it, but also looking at individual student performance. So taking a look at this one data point and then other measures. So for example, EAMS-up testing that will conclude at the end of the week, and some of those other measures from the student, for example, in third grade into fourth grade, looking for consistency, looking for gaps as we analyze the data. And then developing a really concrete plan with actual instructional strategies for the individual student is really where we're also placing a lot of our attention, so that we're targeting instruction for what individual students need in small group and one-on-one.
Thank you. I was just hoping that perhaps we could hear from Mr. Docman just on your thoughts around those lower scores of the NGSS, and particularly maybe even the grade 11, just for additional context and how we might think about that.
So is there anything specific that?
Well, it just stood out, you know, typically, Darien is, and in the other slides even, right? Like, it's either at the top or very close. And here is one specific subject matter where we're the lowest in the DERC. So I just, you know, what might that be? Is our, you know, is our science curriculum different in some way? Was there a particular cohort? Like, just, is this surprising to us?
So first of all, if we look back four years since we started doing the NGSS assessment after COVID, we've seen significant growth over those four years. So this year, or last year's juniors improved over the juniors that we had that have graduated. And so this year's seniors performed better than the seniors before them. So we've seen consistent growth in our 11th grade. You know, a couple of things that we've looked at is looking at our science sequence and what our students are experiencing in ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade. And that's something that I've been in conversations with other, my colleagues in the DERC and looking specifically, like, how do they approach ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade? And where are they meeting those standards that we may be able to look at and say, you know what, we see biology in ninth grade, chemistry in 10th grade, and then we see sort of a splintering based on student interest. And that may mean that a student gets to take physics, and they get physics standards prior to the assessment. But it also means that the student may take AP Bio again because they're really interested in biology. And then they're getting a review on some of those biology standards, but they're not necessarily getting instruction in that three-year sequence on the physics standards or the earth science, earth and space science standards. So those are certainly things that we're looking into and seeing how we can ensure that our juniors who are taking the test have had as much experience with those three different content strands as possible. So that's one, you know, one thing that we're doing to sort of focus on that 11th grade and figure out what we can do to best support our students moving forward.
Thank you. And is that path different at the other DERC schools?
Yeah, so each school has a different path. So if we look at just New Canaan up north of us, they have two different pathways for their students. They have a geophysical sciences in ninth grade, and then they go into biology and then in chemistry. So those students get experience with all of the three science strands. A certain segment, honors-level students may do honors, bio honors, chem honors, physics, similar to what we have here in Darien. And so there's a variety of different pathways that they make on a local level. The decisions are made on a local level. You know, I think we've had, as a department, discussions about our science sequence and certainly believe that giving students an opportunity to experience classes that they're interested in has distinct advantages as opposed to forcing them into taking a class junior year simply to cover content standards that may be part of an assessment. And I think we see the value in that. And certainly, those conversations in our department at the high school are ongoing in terms of how do we integrate some of those standards that our students may not be getting in those three years into interest-based elective? So like, for example, we'll be bringing in an astronomy class that may be able to give students more experience with some of the earth and space science and physics standards that they might not be able to experience currently.
That was wonderful context. Thank you. Very helpful. Just one final question. Are you seeing in those other metrics that Ms. Roller mentioned as, you know, being particularly of importance to educators? You know, the formative assessments and the self-assessments. Are you seeing, you know, the strength that you would expect from those students in their course path, chosen path, curriculum?
Yeah, and those are, those sort of formative assessments and student self-reflections are something that we've made, I think, really positive strides over the past four years in integrating those into our classes. You know, I think when you look at some of the other content-based assessments that Ms. Oster will talk about, like, our science scores in the ACT are particularly strong. And so that's just another data point that is supportive of the strength of our program here. So I think we see in the classroom, the strength of our children and our students come out in a variety of different ways that may not necessarily be shown in a one single data point here on the screen.
Thank you so much.
I see you, Brenna, but before we wrap this particular one up. Amy, this question comes up every year or every so often. I think when we present next time, would you all talk about some of that context about the, in particular, the limitations of this test on our specific science approach? It would be just helpful to keep it as a regular reminder.
In relation to our sequence?
Yes.
In relation to the standards that our students are hitting?
Yes.
And what they're expected to know and be able to show their understanding of in this particular assessment?
Yes, please.
Thinking it may also be helpful, as curriculum is revised, and I know you're working on some assessments, especially at the high school level in grades nine through 12, it may also be helpful to make some of those assessments, to talk about kind of what the features of those are, so we could see the demand and what we're asking students to do. That's not about preparing to take a test. It's, you know, these are things that we are confident that are important in NGSS, that our students should have competency around.
Yes, I think it would be.
So we can probably add that in.
Thank you. Yep. Brenna, then Sarah, then Dennis.
I just wanted to provide some further context for the NGSS assessment for the 11th grade. This year was administered pretty much directly after AP exam season. And for many students that had been, you know, a grueling, a tiring experience, test after test after test, and that may have zapped their energy and willingness to study. Additionally, this wasn't really a test unlike the Smarter Balance or other assessments in that nature that we were, I don't want to say top, but that we were really exposed to. And like Mr. Docman was saying, I think this is the biggest takeaway. It is unbelievably common for 11th graders to not have taken physics and instead to have taken, bought, I mean, forensics, environmental science. And I really just want to speak to the value of preserving that choice. You know, on a personal level, if I didn't have that choice, I wouldn't know what I wanted to do for the rest of my life. You know, like environmental science. I really do think there is undeniable value in keeping that choice. And, you know, that there may be a possibility that we have lesser test scores in comparison to another equally performing high district. But, you know, at the end of the day, I really do think that that's a sacrifice that we're able to make.
Okay. Thank you, Brenna.
And I'll just, if I can sort of, you know, build upon Brenna's comment, it's a tough testing window for juniors because of the AP exams. And then early in the testing window coincides at the same time as the School Day SAT. And so it's a very, it's like threading a needle, really, to try to find the most opportune time to test our juniors. And one of the key benefits of doing it at the end of the testing window, not only is it after AP, but we see, you know, the seniors leave for internship, which gives us the opportunity to do our testing with solely juniors in our science classes. And that gives our teachers the opportunity to, you know, to be proctors and for our students to be comfortable with who's administering the test and for our teachers to be able to give them those basic strategies like, hey, like, slow down. You have 90 minutes, like, take your time, make sure that you're reading everything. And that doesn't necessarily always happen in a room where you're just putting 30 random juniors in a test proctor. So, you know, there are definitely some pluses and minuses to when our test is administered. And we see across our DERC that most of the schools also test in that very end of the window, the last week. So it's something that we see as a, you know, a benefit that we have our teachers doing the administration. But it does sort of put it at the very end of a very busy season for our juniors. And that can impact, you know, their, not their will to focus, maybe, not their ability to focus, but their will to focus a little bit. And, you know, it's just another added piece to the end of their junior year. So.
Okay. Thank you for that. Sarah?
Thank you. Brenna, thank you for your comments. And I think that goes to the point of if we publish this dashboard, that the qualitative data is as important, if not more important, than the quantitative data. Because having this conversation and understanding that context and understanding that there is that choice and pathway explains a lot about those numbers. So having that verbiage of whatever it's going to be, you know, understanding those numbers. Kathy, you came to the podium at a good time. Asking about the ACT science score, and I know that we're well above the Connecticut average. Do you have any sense of where we fall with the DERC? I just wonder if we could use that as a better comparison to the NGSS.
I think we're getting to that in a minute.
No, I know, but I just go, we were talking about science, that if that's a better comparison or not.
So I don't have the DERC comparison for science. I can get that for you.
I was just curious if you, like, knew that it was, you know, are we, do you know, are we at the bottom in that component too?
I don't think we're at the bottom for anything in the DERC. But I'll confirm and get back to you on that. But I'll tell you in a minute, the ACT cohort reports that come out, they come out in mid-October. So I'll have a lot more information in a week or two about other DERCs.
Sorry to jump ahead.
That's okay.
Okay, Dennis had a question, and then we'll move on.
My question will come after this next session.
Okay. All right. Take it away, Kathy.
All right. Well, I'm Kathy Oster, the Director of Counseling, and I'm very excited to share the student achievement data for the high school regarding the Connecticut SAT School Day, as well as the weekend or national SAT and ACT data, and the data for the 1,241 AP exams that were taken last year. Darien High School students once again delivered impressive results. These results are a clear reflection of hours and hours of work, not only by our students but by the faculty. And we're very proud of their talent and their commitment. And we're grateful for a community who clearly values educational excellence. So as I'm sure you know, the Connecticut SAT School Day is a required test for all juniors in public school in Connecticut, and it's administered for free during the school day in the spring. The national SAT and ACT exams are optional exams, and they're typically administered on a Saturday. There's a fee. And I just want to take a minute to point out that Darien High School is a test center four times a year for each test, and that's pretty remarkable. Really, it's, I'm especially grateful to Peter Trombley, who's one of the high school school counselors, who is the test center coordinator on the weekend. So his work and all of the work of the proctors, I think, really does give our kids a home-court advantage when taking those weekend tests. So we are the test center for eight administrations. Students can use the results from either the SAT, a school day, or the national test if they choose to, submit them for admissions considerations in the college application process. And then we have the AP, which is the Advanced Placement exams that are offered in May in accordance with the high school board-issued schedule. Most students enrolled in AP courses will register to take the exam. However, it's not required, and it's not a part of their grade. However, a student doesn't need to be enrolled in an AP course to take the exam. We had students self-study for art history, Chinese, comparative government and politics, German, Italian, Physics One, Physics Two, and psychology last year. And I just want to note before I move through the SAT data, there's two cohorts of students here. The SAT School Day is, that's the current seniors, right? There were the juniors who took the SAT in May of last year. And the 2024 cohort. who took the SAT in May of last year. And the 2024 cohort is the class of 2024. So we're talking about different groups of students. So when we look at the, the School Day test that was administered in March of last year, 328 students took the juniors took the SAT School Day, which was 95% of the class. The, the scores were really strong, as you can see, well above the DIRG average and far above the state average. The College Board benchmarks are scores that the College Board feels will predict a student's chance of earning a C or better in an entry-level college course. And the College Board benchmarks for evidence-based reading and writing are 480, and for math, they're 530. So over 90% of Darien High School juniors met or exceeded the College Board benchmarks in the evidence-based reading and writing, and over 75 met or exceeded the benchmarks in math. So that's even more impressive when you look at the state, the state of Connecticut, a little more than 50% of the population met or exceeded the benchmarks in evidence-based reading and writing, and just about 30% in math. This slide shows the evidence-based reading and writing and math, and then the combined total for the DIRG. This, this data comes from the Ed site where we get a lot of our data. They often refer to the evidence-based reading and writing as ELA, but that, that's the, that's not what they call it on the SAT. So I'm switching from ELA to evidence-based reading and writing, because that's what the College Board calls that test. And then Slide 23, you could see the changes in scores from 2023 to 2024. I do want to remind everyone that on the SAT, each subtest is worth 800 points. So a difference of a couple points is is not statistically significant. Slide 24 is the past five years, sort of. And now we're shifting gears away from the school-based test to the national test. So again, this is the class of 2024. And the way the College Board calculates the averages for this cohort, so if a student takes a test multiple times, they use their last test. So for example, if a student took the March School Day test, but they also chose to take an October SAT in their senior year, the October score would be the score that they use for the cohort when they calculate the average. And I think one of the really impressive points on this slide is that 237 students in the class took the ACT. That's not very common in Connecticut. Other states are different. But we do, I think, because we are a test center and we do offer the pre-ACT on a Saturday as an option, we have a number of students who can choose the test which they feel suits them better. And then this is a comparison of how Darien students compare to Connecticut's students and to students nationally. I think I want to leave it here for another second. And here's a three year comparison. And again, like Christian and Julie both said, you know, the strengths are very, the scores are very strong and consistent over time. These are the ACT scores. The ACT score is on a one to 36 scale. The ACT has four sections, English, math, reading, and science. And then the composite score is the average. This is a three-year comparison. You can see that, you know, our students do very well in each one of the subtests. And in the composite, as I mentioned before, I left the 2023 data up there just as a point of reference, because the 2024 report's not available yet. And now for the Advanced Placement or the AP exams. These are college board exams that are given in May each year. They're designed to assess mastery in a subject-specific college-level curriculum. The scores are reported on a one to five scale, with three being considered qualified to receive college credit or placement. Most exams are two to three hours in length. However, the art courses do submit a digital portfolio. As I mentioned, most students prepare for these exams by taking the, the AP course that's taught at the high school. But we did have about 25 students who self-studied for courses that weren't taught at the high school. Some colleges grant credit for AP scores, and others may use these scores for placement or to waive requirements or prerequisites. This is a five-year trend. As you can see, there's an increase in 42 more students and taking 272 more exams, and they continue to be successful. So it's quite exceptional to have a 93%, 93% of the students who take AP exams score three or higher. But then I was asked, you know, that national, three or higher, College Board puts that out a lot. That's a very common statistic that people refer to. But people wanted to know how many kids score a four or a five in Darien. And so I did see that 69% of students who take the test scored a four or a five. So again, that's very, very impressive. Came out to 854 exams out of the 1,241 that were a four or a five. This is just a quick slide to show you the 25 courses that are offered at Darien High School, the AP courses. And as you well know, we're adding AP Psychology, which possibly could be another 100 exams for this year. And then, I believe, my last slide is just a report that the College Board puts out. It's called Equity and Excellence. I know you've seen these statistics over the years. But the top line shows the graduating class that at some point in high school, so at any point in their four years, 71% of the students at Darien High School, the class of 2024, took an AP exam and got a three. And then below that are by each grade. So the current 12th, well, last year's 12th grade, 61% of the 12th graders. So out of all of the whole population, we submit how many, we have 350 seniors last year, 61% of them took an AP exam and got a three or higher. So good numbers. So I'm gonna, next is my wonderful colleague, Scott Webster, who's here to present some impressive data about our students and the SEAL of Bilinguacy, and then I'll come back for questions.
Hi, everybody. One quick slide for you guys. SEAL of Bilinguacy. As you can see, we've had many students being awarded the SEAL of Bilinguacy over the years in Darien. Graduation Class of 2024, we had 147 seniors who earned the SEAL of Bilinguacy in nine different languages. So that includes the languages that we teach here formally, in addition to some other heritage languages, like Polish and Russian and German and Estonian. And we'd like to see this trend increasing. And it's a really great badge of honor for our students to earn the SEAL. It goes on their academic resume and their diploma, and it's, it's fantastic for us. Any questions?
Well, I'll take questions specific to the SEAL of Bilinguacy before you pop over. Any? Is is the number fairly random, meaning that we just happen to have, because because of the native speakers, does that switch it up and down?
Yeah, it does fluctuate every year, just a little bit. But it's wonderful that we do, we have that capacity to, you know, to offer that, you know, for 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 many students. So.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. Did you have a question?
Yeah. So, so what I'm, I guess my question is, with native and heritage speakers, so we haven't taught them their bilinguacy. So can we break that out as to whom we've educated with their, with, it's not their native tongue?
So these often are, those other languages, these heritage languages are languages that are that are spoken at home. So these are often students who are taking two. So you can, you can get multiple SEALs of Bilinguacy. So it can be the link, the formal language that we offer here, as well as the language that there's, that they speak at home.
Last year was the first year that we shared this data. It's really impressive. I'm not aware of a lot of schools who do this. So that's a great, maybe a lot of two slides next year. So we can have students who are taking the courses at Darien High School. That's your question, right?
Correct.
The students who take the courses at Darien High School, how many have earned a SEAL of Bilinguacy versus the native speakers?
And just to add one data point, the 147 seniors, that number is almost double the total population of ML, of students who receive ML services in the school system. And certainly, all of those students aren't seniors. So the vast majority of these are students who have demonstrated proficiency in English and a language studied in school. But we can certainly break those numbers out. That would be something we could make available.
I'm just interested, since now in 24, we have nine languages, and it seems like it's gradually been increasing every year for the past number of years. In addition to the Polish, Russian, German, Estonian, I'm just curious what the other languages are, because it's showing a lot of additional diversity in our community. That's an interesting kind of aspect of this as well.
Yeah, there are many other languages that students can earn the SEAL in. And the the testing company that we use is called Avant. And I was just looking at the other day, they offer about 40 different languages. So.
But do you know what the nine languages were in 2024, where they earned it?
Yeah, so Russian, Estonian, Polish, and German, in addition to the languages that we we offer, and Italian. Yeah, exactly. And then the other four are the ones that that we teach formally. Yep, in Darien.
I think that's a good thing to add next year, too, while we're on the sound check. Thank you.
Yeah.
Not that we've included this. It was something that we included, as I mentioned, for the first time last year. And it's certainly adding to kind of the portfolio of assessments and how we do student achievement.
Yes. Did I see someone on the left? I see Sarah's on the right. I thought I saw left. Okay, Sarah?
I'm just curious if you have the comparison to the DIRG or the state, is our, where do we fall in terms of our, you know, language speakers?
I don't have that data, but I can look into that.
Just for next year, just to be interesting, since we're comparing everything else to.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can add maybe in a third slide for next year.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Now back over to Kathy. Questions for Kathy on the other data. Dennis?
So going, going back to the science question, with with our AP exams, do we see any drop in science versus other AP classes?
Do you, are you familiar with the science score specifically? I could grab my.
So I can't pull the the percentage of students that scored three on each of our science exams, but I can tell you that they are extremely, extremely high. And and I would be shocked if we had, if it wasn't 80, 80 or 85% or higher scoring three or more.
Yeah. So again, going back to what I think it would be great to have a larger picture of what our scores are across multiple testing parameters. And AP maybe want to break that science out. So compared to the NGSS, which is, and again, I think Brenna's point about the testing time, I'm assuming, and I thought you said was, New Canaan and other schools take their tests the same time. So that's not the, it's not a, the rationale of why, right?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, it is a, you know, I think one of the, the other pieces that comes into this is, in talking with colleagues, is also sort of the the context of of how each different town or each different high school talks, utilizes this exam. So, for example, there are districts in in DIRG A who have a local graduation requirement tied directly to student performance in the NGSS assessment. So, you know, that that may or may not have an impact on on whether or not a student comes and and does, you know, tries their absolute hardest on on that particular exam. You know, there's value to having that. There, there's also value to to not. We don't necessarily, we don't particularly have a connection to graduation requirements directly to the NGSS assessment. So there are a wide range of differences that are seen locally at different schools that certainly we were looking into and that we may, you know, have a, not a reason or rationale, but get us closer to an answer as to what we can do to support our students.
I have, I have a few numbers I can just rattle off if you want. And they're also on our school profile, which is on the website. But for example, I believe your question was how many students by science exam, AP science exam scored a three or better?
I just want to, just asking if we've run the numbers to see if that's comparable to the 90% that we have scoring threes.
Yeah. So biology, for example, 95% of the students scored a three or better. Chemistry, 98% scored a three or better. AP Environmental Science, 81% scored a three or better. Physics C, electricity and magnetism, 100%. Actually, there were only, there were a couple. Well, I'll just say, there were 13 students tested. They all scored a four or a five. 11 scored a five. I don't know if that's too much detail, but that's awesome. And then for the Physics C, Mechanics, that also was 95%.
Perfect. Thank you. And again, I think we're, you know, we're not, we're not trying to point fingers and say things are wrong or bad. We're just trying to understand what the data is. And if we, if you need even further support, we're happy to provide that support. So it's not a, we're not trying to blame blame and just want, just trying to understand, you know, we have one set of scores that shows us lower than our average, and and other scores are showing we're doing very well. So.
Which underscores the the importance of looking at multiple assessments, right, when we're talking about student achievement. And each of these assessment points are at one particular moment in time. But we should always be looking at multiple data points to try and relate the data. It makes sense of it.
Okay. Any other questions? Greg?
Yeah. And just to add to that point, I mean, an interesting observation is on page 30, the five-year AP score trend. It looks like the, there has been a rise in AP students. We're up from 465 to 507, but there's a much greater rise in the number of PP exams from 969 to 1241. So that's a little over two AP exams per AP student to almost two and a half over, you know, over only four years. I'm, I'm interested in hearing thoughts in terms of like, how do we think about that? Are we, are we happy that there's more? Or is that because we have more opportunities for the students to take APs? They're taking more courses? And is there any cost to that?
I think this is my opinion. I mean, it's an opinion, right? It's, it's really difficult to answer the question, because I think that we want students to take the most rigorous classes they can do well in, and it shouldn't be at the expense of well-being. You know, so some students can handle taking three or four APs, and others have different, they spend their time differently. And taking, you know, three or four APs would be a terrible idea for them. So we definitely, it's a national movement that's been for years now, that the College Board wants to expose students to college-level work while they're still in high school. So it's a, it's a real, it's a real balance. I think it's great when students find that balance and do well. And I think that Darien High School supports students well and prepares students well. Yeah, maybe you guys could answer that better than I. But it's a tricky question to answer.
Yeah, I think it just goes more to like the sort, like we were talking about before, like astronomy, like just the creation of many of these new electives. And I think many of the science courses are very new. And I think with that sort of broaden, broaden catalog of different classes, I think that allows students to sort of look towards what they sort of like, while also taking a class that is very rigorous and is very challenging as well.
Thank you.
Plug for some of the work that my departmentary colleagues have done over the the past couple of years in in conjunction, in collaboration with with our high school leadership. At the end of 2022, we instituted a waiver policy to provide families with an opportunity to waive into some of our honors and AP-level classes. And so you do see a jump in the number of students that took APs tests in 2023. And the number exams jumps up by 150 there. But I also think it's important to notice that the number, the percentage of kids that are scoring three plus
that are scoring three plus has stayed the same there. And so we've increased access and allowed students to challenge themselves where they are interested. And and that has resulted in a consistent level of achievement. So like, if you look at 2020, um, and before that, that, you know, we really were sticking to our prerequisites and and really talking about, you know, you you earned this opportunity based on what you've done in the past. And now we're, we're really focused on giving students an opportunity to take those higher level and more rigorous classes based on where their interests may lie. Um, we certainly have those conversations about course load and about the impact it's going to have on other classes that they're taking. But um, I I really think that that's been a a positive in in terms of giving students who may not necessarily have the um thought about taking an AP based on their their achievement, the opportunity to take a an AP course at some point during their uh high school career.
Thank you.
I would just add the the score is important. And in addition, students having the opportunity to experience this level of rigor while still in high school. There's also, that experiential factor is also something that is hard to quantify. But as a parent, as an assistant superintendent, I would say it's something we want our children to experience before they're off and away from home. Like the score is important, but also the experience as well.
I'm just, I'm sort of just repeating, I'm I'm particularly proud of this, this process of opening the doors for all kids. Uh, if if they want to step to the plate and and uh our teachers help them along the way. And uh, there's a belief in them from their parents that they can do it. There's a belief in them from themselves that they can do it. And there's a belief in them from our our staff that uh we can get them over the threshold. I'm just particularly proud of, that's an equity process right there. If you want an example of it, there it is right there.
Thank you.
And we want children to take risks. We want children to take risks in their, in their learning, right? Instead of taking the easy, the the easy path of what they know they'll, they'll excel in. Um, we want children to take risks and to try new things and to explore new areas of of interest without only being concerned about the score or the achievement at the end.
Thank you. Uh, Dennis and then Brenna.
Just one quick question. So in slide 24, you show the five-year average of the school day, and you see that math is dropping. And then slide 27, we have math being fairly consistent. So that's just the difference between school day and then general SAT. So it's just the specific on day and the other is the course of your SAP career?
Yes, by by graduating class.
Okay, thank you.
Brenna.
Um, so just to respond to the AP data, um, I think we also have to factor in a cultural shift. AP exams have definitely increased in significance um with the expansion of uh college camp counseling, social media networking, things like that, programs that are really building up. Um, like I said, significance surrounding AP and college board as this giant, you know, monopoly that is the way to demonstrate to colleges. And so they're highly encouraged and um and sort of like society perceived as this way to demonstrate readiness. And so I think that is also why many students are generally taking on more, prioritizing more. We know that college admissions are way more competitive than they were. Um, and we similarly know that, you know, AP is way more significant than it was.
Thank you. And Brian's agreeing. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Who's next?
And this is just, um, we discussed recently with the board, the next generation accountability report. This is that the accountability index is the summary of these 12 indicators that range from of of obviously, as you can see, ELA mathematics, um, achievement of all students, uh, the subset achievement of students who are identified as high needs, um, four and six-year graduation rates, um, our Connecticut physical fitness assessment, access to the arts. So again, this just broadens the portfolio of um not only what our students are exposed to in the way of assessment, but also how we view achievement and how we view achievement across um student school experience. The reason why there is only the 2023, um, 22, 23 results is because the new results from this past academic year will not be released until the end of November. Um, but again, we're consistently um performing uh not only at the top of the state, but certainly also at the top of the Derg. Um, when you, when you view all of the indicators across um one through 12. And I included this here because uh we wanted to take one other quick dip into the data dashboard, which again, um, has not been approved. It's just one other area where we're, um, thank you, Cass, where we're um sharing some of these data points. Tonight, obviously, the presentation included many more data points that are in the data dashboard, including grades outside of three, five, eight and 11. But just on the whole, one of the things that we did, this is low level, but it might be a little bit easier on the eye. We've matched each of the um, the bands. So where SBA has like a turquoise or teal band, that's what you would see going across. The um orange bar is um the Derg percentage and the blue bar is the state percentage on every single chart. Um, one of the things that we haven't yet updated, but what we've discussed tonight is more of that qualitative piece, like really talking about what is the assessment and providing a bit more context um for the assessment and where it sits in our student experiences and in the overall portfolio of assessments that are offered. Um, but other than that, the the rest of the dashboard um is as we showed it last time. And as we continue to further develop this, we'll be sharing with the board when we have more of an update again around the qualitative piece and the descriptors for these various assessments.
Robin. Can I just ask a question, just going back to the um, the state, the next generation accountability index? Slot the index. Um, and this is obviously a lot of data. I think it would be really helpful if we could see what the comparison is to our Derg, similar to what you did on the, on those graphs. I mean, and just because some of the the rankings I know are heavily influenced by how the state weights certain things and, you know, it's kind of a, we don't know what weights they're, they're applying to certain things. So it's just helpful to see kind of a comparison to our Derg. How do we?
For the index?
On the, I'm talking about the the next generation accountability report.
Yes, because right here we're showing the summary of the data, right, across all 12 indicators.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Um, okay. I apologize.
No, it wasn't there.
Um, now, that's helpful. Yeah, that's helpful. I guess I did have a specific question about it though, which was um the, like, the academic growth for math and English. We scored, you know, 50, 65% out of 100 and versus our actual performance index where we basically got 50 out of 50 points.
Yes.
So I'm curious how the state is like, they have their targets and kind of why we score so low on the growth. Is it because we're already starting at a very high place? And so our percentage growth per year is not going to be that significant?
Exactly. So one of the ways I've described this um in a, in a previous meeting uh board was it's kind of like when you run a four-minute mile, right? It's a lot harder to shave off seconds when you're at the four-minute mark than when you're at, you know, the 15-minute mark. So that's one piece. Um, the piece about the performance of students who are identified as high, as receiving services or in the high needs group. This would be very consistent with um a- across all 12 indicators across the Derg. Would be very comparable. Uh, they would, they would um also likely be receiving most of the points with the whole group population and not quite as many of the points um with the growth indicators. And those are more heavily weighted for everyone across the state.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Greg.
And I think like the point that that you just made and and Robin kind of called out is like that, that's one of those key like call-out points for a Connecticut accountability index where like there's only so good we can do if we're already that good. And to me, like, you can turn that into a selling point. And that, that to me is one of the big advantages of this whole dashboard. It's like, we can use this for a lot of things besides just putting it onto a website.
Excellent.
You can use this to recruit teachers from other districts and say, look how good we are. You can do, you can use it to retain teachers and say like, look, look at what a great job you're doing. You can use it to reward teachers and say like, this, we're amazing, like this is, we're great. So I think that there's a lot of benefits that we haven't really talked about as a board that we probably should. And I think that uh the way that it looks here is, I think, is fantastic.
Thank you for recognizing that. Um, I hope that our teachers are listening. It's really important um that they hear those remarks and comments because again, there's, there's just so much data that you can look at. And each data point might tell a different story, which is why it's so important to have a portfolio view and to be looking at all of these different data points and connecting them one to another. Um, the other piece, the other point that I think is important to consider is that what we want to ensure we're doing is looking at not only these big numbers, right? Like this, they call it like satellite data. We really also want to ensure that we have systems in place, which we do and we're refining, to look at individual data points. So every parent around the table and those wa- watching is interested in these numbers. But ultimately, all, we also want to know what individual students are doing and how we're tracking their growth and progress. So that's additional work that um we'll continue to share with the board and work that we're very proud of. But thank you for recognizing that, and I hope our teachers are are hearing those remarks.
Just the, the, the school improvement plans, our, our staff sitting before me here and other staff, they'll be asking more questions from this. And I gotta be honest, this is one of the first times we have profiled our high need students the way we're profiling it. Um, and I, I I very much appreciate the discourse and and disposition of the board in in discussing it. But it's important for our young people, our high needs kids to be making annual close too. Um, so this is going to be useful from SES uh to classroom, regular classroom teachers. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that's, that that is being used. Um, we should be using it for that purpose. Um, happy to support in general this, this type of understanding of it.
All right, with that, um, thank you all. And I'm pretty sure Alan was trying to tell you should all go home.
Thank you, team. See you tomorrow.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is update on fiscal year 26 budget initiatives. This is meant to be just a status report at this time on what was discussed in July. So we know where the administration is in the, in the process. We won't be going through the merits of any of them uh at the meeting this evening.
So we can, if we just speak real quickly to a couple of these, again, as, as my chair just mentioned, these are just status reports. Have they fallen off? Uh, are they still alive? Uh, where are we with it in general? Some of these have their own presentation scheduled uh by the calendar. So if you want to talk just real quickly about, and I'll say real quickly, just give the updates to the board. If you remember, the board said that we get, you wanted to add in an update on all of them, just in general, like at the same time. So this is what, this is what we're getting.
Sure. We had a robust discussion at the um October 2nd curriculum committee meeting around K3 literacy, and we'll be revisiting that as well um during, as um Sarah mentioned, during the October 22nd um full board meeting. That continues to be a monthly agenda item at the curriculum committee. And um our steering committee, uh district literacy steering committee is, is alive and well. And we've got our core review team that's um supporting the implementation of our pilot program in grades one through three. And what we're going to be doing is offering the public session on October 16th for families um and community members to learn a little bit more about the HMH into reading pilot and the other um curricular resources that we're using in district. Um, one of the things that we talked about during the curriculum committee um meeting is while the state is, has not changed their um, their stance on having a state-approved program from that small um list of state-approved programs, we are committed to with the process involving our staff so that there's um voice, staff voice in the decision that's made. And I also appreciated um Sarah and and Jill's comments last time that we will not rush a decision in this area uh in the interest of um timeline, right, for um for budget processes. So it's work that we need to really be committed to as administration and the board to ensure that we're being very intentional with our decision-making moving forward. And um we also will be making sure that we, when we need to, uh, in November, that we have an opportunity for teacher feedback um to be shared with the board um about the pilot and current resources. The um, do you want to stop for questions on that?
I think we'll hear, we'll hear more about that on the 22nd.
We will.
So unless there's a a pretty high-level question, there'll be plenty of time for discussion in two weeks.
Um, really quickly, uh, with EduPlanet, which again, we'll hear more about on the 22nd, there's a proposal for expansion, which is really just about um access that our teachers and administrators would have to that platform, which, which is where our curriculum is housed. So there's a finite number of um licenses that we have for curriculum writers right now and even for people to have U access. And also wanting to make sure that we have um public access for all stakeholders. I also have um a very concrete data with regard to the percent of curriculum that's complete um at all stages with course uh description, stage one, two and three um across the board for the, for the departments. So that's something that I can share that evening or in a memo to the board. Uh, it will be a very nominal fee to um to expand. Uh, and it's really should be a non-negotiable that our staff has access to the curriculum. So that's um something that we want to ensure is a priority moving forward. Play-based learning is something we're super excited about. Um, we have a, an awesome group of very dedicated teachers. We had about 18 people come to a voluntary meeting a week ago to understand more about the statute for play-based learning and how we're approaching that in Darian Public Schools. We've um outlined a professional learning session. I I offered a professional learning session in August on this topic where we talked about the research of play-based learning and um how to begin to have a more common understanding of what play-based learning is in Darian Public Schools. Um, additionally, we will have that group come back together again. It's the teachers that are actually designing the professional learning with me that will be offered for the staff on the November, November 5th date. And uh we'll begin our curriculum writing process on October 29th so that we ensure that play-based learning curricula is aligned to standards. So um one final piece around that is there are some pieces of equipment or furniture that we want to consider to have in our classrooms, like sensory tables, kitchens. And so we're also taking an inventory. Um, it's my understanding that some of those things may have made it after, through the pandemic and others may not. So wanting to ensure what we have in each of those pre-K and kindergarten spaces.
Um, so that number 50,000 is inclusive of?
Yes.
Uh, professional development and potentially some materials, if you will.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Um, the PLC, I don't know, Dr. Adley, if you want to talk about?
Yeah, I'll just jump in there real quickly. This is, this is an opportunity to support our, the, the professional capacity of our staff um through professional learning at time that we haven't decided on a model or what that should look like. There's a 219,000 placeholder there for one, one version of of providing professional time. And we'll do this for a couple of reasons. Um, A, it's a high school recommendation from the, the NIAS accreditation team. Uh, that's in there as a, as a recommendation for additional time for your staff. Um, it's also a recommendation from the Tri-State uh report that was put out. And also say that it would be a, a very strong, positive, lucrative recruitment strategy uh for staff. That being said, we still have to do a review of the Derg and the review of the uh the literature and schedule up a follow-up meeting with uh student transportation, uh student transportation first and. Uh, but there's, there's uh, the ministry team is, are strongly in favor of, of looking at this and continuing to meet and bring forward a proposal. So that's uh what we intend to do. Uh, the facility study is sort of speaks for itself a little bit, Richard, I think, right? It's, it's, it's probably going to be that money, so.
So we already received votes. That, that is the lowest quote we got. Uh, so if the board wanted to do a study for the middle school, high school, Tovini, you would have to choose to put that in the budget.
Our director of technology is uh uh overseeing the website redesign, which will be an increase uh of $20,000 approximately. Uh, but the nature of the, the improvements are still, still being determined, but that is underway as a, as a proposal. Uh, transition uh program, do you want to speak to that, Charlotte?
And we did an opportunity to share with the board last year where we were in our, in our process steering committee. Where we're looking at right now is in planning for, right, um, looking at the areas or location. Is this working? On location, uh, similar to Fitch Academy development, we looked at it, what would be accessible and starting out because it may be a small group of students. If you remember, although we'd need Ellen to confirm, I think we started with three students at Fitch when we first began. So looking at accessing possible location near Fitch or next to Fitch, um, we'd be able to share staff with them. We'd be able to share psychologists with them, possibly related service providers, speech and language mythologists. Um, we need some paraeducators and we're looking at the staffing for that. But that would help with nursing services also, because there is a nurse. So we're trying to look at if we can be in that proximity of Fitch, that may help for that area. Um, and also just have a home, you know, with other students and, and part of that. Also, transportation, we know we need additional transportation. We're looking at those numbers on budget purpose. However, there is a bus and transportation provided for some Fitch students, so that might help with arrival. Maybe not with internships or local internships in the, in the community. Also looking at that location, it's close to businesses. It's close to the library where we already have a relationship. We actually started Fitch in a library, if you remember initially. Um, it has stores over there, it's, why it has the library, um, some retail stores and some uh businesses that we think would want to partner with us. So we're looking at that, at that location. Um, like Fitch, I think if we know we're going to, most importantly, begin with a small number of students, the next step is really reaching out to families who's. the next step is really reaching out to families whose students are eligible for a transition program for two thousand twenty five, twenty six. Because we recognize um there are some students who are already in transition programs in either other um local districts. Um, also, the RISE program at Sacred Heart, uh we have students at NET over at um Norwalk Community College. So we have to really speak to families and students of what the um the commitment will be and what we're interested in is our program. So those are our next steps. Thank you.
Student information system, um if you're basically recall, it's sort of the question whether Aspen or Park School type thing. There is a scenario here where we would lean back into Aspen. Uh, that puts us in a conflict a wee bit with the communications uh surveys that we got from our 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 parents who are concerned about Aspen. So uh we're trying to unravel that a little bit. And uh if we did go with Aspen, there there's been identified uh professional learning that needs to be done across the staff, believe it or not, on Aspen uh that to make the improvements we want to make. Uh, but there is a, there is a possibility here that that won't come back as actually Park School, that it'll actually come back to stay with Aspen, which, again, we have to square the message in and what it means for for parents and understand that. Um, but that's just a, that's a development of where we are. The fifth grade departmentalization, I don't think I have talked at the board table about this. So um uh I put it on uh just because it has been on for discussion for a wee bit, but uh with our ministry of team. I'll tell you, as of today, I'm taking it off, okay? Um, the final meeting was today, but if 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 I had had a meeting today and we would have went through with it, it would have, it would have stayed on. Um, the thought was that it's, I'll tell you what it is really, but the thought was that it's just going to be too much for this year, uh given everything that's going on with the schools, with early literature, um uh with the moving around of the classrooms and so on and so forth. Basically, it's looking at departmentalizing the fifth grade, meaning for simple terms, it's not as simple as this, but for simple terms, you have a teacher for math and science, you have a teacher for social studies and English. There's expertise there, there's less training for staff. Um, there's a transition can be built in for kids uh from fifth grade to sixth grade. Uh, I'll say now you don't have to worry about it. Um, but we will take some time, particularly second semester, looking at the merits of of uh perhaps down the line, look, looking at this as an option. But I didn't want to have a meeting today where we were going to be forward and not have it on, so.
Okay. All right, good. Katie.
Thank you. Um, I actually have several questions. Um. Um, sorry, just where to start. Um, Amy, quick question for you. The placeholder um budget that um you had attributed to K through C, um K through three literacy, um, does that include professional development or is that just for the program cost?
That is the program cost.
Okay, so um then Alan, when you were talking about um the PLC and the placeholder for that, is it, is there potential that the liter- K through three literacy would would come under that then as well?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we'll not support that just.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then um Shirley, I wanted to ask about the transition programming. Um, I actually went back um and watched um the the presentation that we had in March. Um, because I pride myself on being prepared. Um, and I just wanted to, there were a number of questions from the board, and there were um three buckets of next steps that were outlined, um which involved parent and community involvement, ongoing program touring and model development, fiscal planning and proposal development. So um I just wanted to ask when we might expect the next full presentation.
Well, I don't know what the date is. If we have a date for that, it's on the agenda.
On the master agenda?
Yeah, it should be on the, yes, it is on the master agenda.
Um, it's, so it's before we start like our budget season and receive our budget books, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll double check on that then. Um, and then.
I think it's more.
And then um Alan, I just finally just wanted to say that um I appreciate your comments around the fifth grade departmentalization, and I appreciate you not rushing something that you're not ready for. Um, and then I just wanted to make another plug that um if this is something that you continue to look into for the next um school year or just even in the future, that um, you know, any, being able to discuss initiatives, ideas, programs, all of those things based on their merit um outside of the budget conversation is always just really helpful. So, you know, just factoring in that timing, I think, is is really appreciated from a board perspective. Thank you.
I just pulled up the master agenda, November twenty sixth is the transition.
So is that um, is that part of the SES um update?
Hey, it's Greg.
Um, just two quick things. One is on the website redesign and its potential suggestions slash question. I'm sort of looking to my left, actually, on this one is, could this potentially be a student project? And then the second question is on the, on I, on Aspen. Is there, you kind of alluded to this potentially, Dr. Adley, is for Aspen, we possibly go back to them with explicit feedback on what we think is wrong with their interface, presentation, efficiencies, whatever. And they can, I've I've seen this done in other, you know, with other software programs that are online and usable, where they could potentially make changes to improve it.
Well, potentially, I don't know how they take the feedback in terms of like uh how many users, that they have limited users in Connecticut, there's only a handful of us uh who's actually using Aspen at this particular point. But I think they have been uh responsive to us. Um, I think I'm saying that, that the the company itself has been responsive. Um, and then, and this particular suggestion is the professional learning for the staff. They would be facilitating that for us. So I think we're, the spirit of what you're asking is yes, that 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 would be responsive to us and either hopefully in their modules or designs or something. I can't speak that they'll definitely do that, but but in the spirit of it, I found the feedback we have that they've been responsive.
I mean, we've, we've given them feedback um routinely. Uh, they won't do like wholesale changes unless they think it's good for all their clients across the United States. But they've made small changes for us when we've uh we've noticed uh things that we'd like changed. Um, so Jeff and his department do routine the top.
But I mean, uh, one of the things we have to do, I'm I'm not pointing to to community members in the community here, but I am. Um, but we got to get a sense of the disconnect as to for for the user. And if if we are going to keep it, we read nearly, you need to understand what that disconnect feedback is because um that's a stumbling block.
It's just hard to find where to click on the buttons to get the the reports that you want. I'm a user, it's just very hard to like find it. So it's like, I think, and and on your phone especially, it's like, you can't just like click a couple of things and have it pop up. It's very hard. That that it's like, actually, to me, it's a pretty simple fix. Like, parents just want to be able to click like two buttons and have the whole thing pop up.
Um, you just mentioned about um our student, our students' participation in the uh website. I think that the students could participate at the website, design, input, that type of stuff, the the upkeep of it. In theory, it could work, but in practice, it's not, I I I've yet to see it work, to be honest with you, in different places uh where someone is actually managing the the upkeep of the actual website itself, the communication part of it. Uh, that's lacking, and we have to, we have a couple of options that we're thinking about uh about doing that. But certainly would like the our students input into the actual interface.
Um, I mean, from a student's perspective, I mean, we've been using Aspen for just such a long period of time that we've sort of gotten used to every different function, where to locate certain uh statistics and stuff like that. Uh, from a parent's perspective, I can't really talk much on that. I know you kind of want like the more simplicity to see any statistic that your kids, I assume, would likely have. And from that, I could definitely see uh where you're coming from and definitely your outlook. But from a student's perspective, I think we've grown very accustomed to the different functions of Aspen, and I don't see a much needed change from that area.
But thank you, Ryan, that's helpful. Julie.
Thank you. Yeah, I've just done that. I think I've been using Aspen for fourteen or fifteen years now, and I'm I'm pretty fluent at this point. It was a steep, maybe not as steep as I would have liked learning curve, but I I I do think that there's room to understand better where people struggle with it and try to make it easier on them with better guidance or changes. It's not really what I wanted to ask, though. Um, what I wanted to ask was regarding the facility study. We'll have a conversation about that, or was that it just there, that it's two hundred thousand and we have to decide if we want it or not? Okay, just checking. So I don't know if this comes back to us again, but it might be helpful since we have next steps. If there are dates, just to put them in here, because that was what I was craving as I was reading the materials for tonight. Thanks.
Joe.
Yes.
Just just one, just one additional point on Aspen. I have, as Julie, you know, fourteen years of trying to use this. And I would say that as you get into the high school level, it becomes much more intuitive because the students use it every day, and they can also help you as a parent understand how it works. And like frankly, in the elementary years, I don't really feel the need for it, except to print the report card that comes out. And same thing with middle school almost. So I personally, I understand that the backend database needs are so, so much more um huge and important that I would think that some of the survey feedback was probably just parents that can't do it on a cell phone.
It's just lazy. I mean, for me, it's just lazy.
Okay, well, in the spirit of meeting management, it's after ten. Um, and uh so thank you for the comments, but let's move on to the discussion of the proposed fiscal year twenty six budget meeting calendar. Thank you all.
I don't really have much to say about it, other than, you know, if the board wants to have a discussion about it.
No, well, sorry. Robin.
Um, the, just one correction, um, the March eleventh Board of Ed meeting should actually say March twelfth, because it was a Wednesday and March eleventh is a Tuesday. That's the same night as the Board of Finance meeting.
Yep. Dennis, did you have any? Dave.
I was just, good way to say that, I thought it looked good.
Sarah.
Can you remind me that the the be it the Board of Finance, there's F and B Education, all the, all the other town bodies, they get it the night we, then the Thursday presentation that Dr. Adley gives, is that the same? Did that happen last year too?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I was just, I couldn't remember, I was clarifying.
There's always like, like people request stuff. It's important to me to stick to this because the worst thing is like trying to copy these books uh and last minute requests from people who relatively should know better because it's the same thing every year. And when we can stick to it, it would be.
I just also think it's helpful, this is going to sound not the way I mean it, but to control the narrative, it's helpful to have, not have people have it, a look at the budget before you're able to to explain your thinking. So I, so I like it.
Okay, all right, with that, um, we'll move on to, thank you all. Do we, we'll vote on this, I think we need to at some point. Usually we vote on our calendars, so the next meeting will vote on the actual calendar.
So we're basically keeping the same.
It's basically the same, we've just moved their dates forward. Yeah, we took out um putting in here when the Board of Finance or RTM heads come and speak to us. I think it's never worked to try and actually schedule people, and let's see if they even want to. So if there'll be some interaction with those folks, if they want to come and speak, we'll get them on an agenda. Um, but we're not trying to predetermine that from our end. We can't really vote to tell the someone else when their schedule is, guess, Robin.
I I I just found it helpful in the past when they did come to speak to give some feedback and I.
Yes, so we do, what we do have in here is when we'd like to have their questions. Um, what we don't have in here is the night on which they actually show up publicly, but it's a fair point. It is helpful that there be interaction from all members of the, all of our stakeholders. Yep, okay. Personnel review and report, thank you for putting this together, Marge.
So I think the memo speaks for itself. The only thing that I will point out is that these are the areas that people mentioned with most frequency for why they're leaving. But you have to sort of them all together. So for example, when someone says that they're moving closer to home, I mean, they're doing an economic analysis, right? I'm going to trade a commute because I don't, you know, I, the pay differential is not great enough for uh me to continue with the commute, or the caseload is not, you know, manageable enough. So it's just, it it doesn't always stand alone, but I think the information has remained relatively stable, um, except that teachers have not um complained as much about that the atmosphere and the pressures of working here this year.
That's great. And then in terms of the the run rate for fiscal year twenty five, is this, is this, we were thirty two at this date, forty one at this date? Or is this, we were thirty two in fiscal year twenty one period versus forty two, excuse me, forty one at this year, but this year's not finished?
Yes.
It's the same date and time.
Yeah, so so the thirty two whole year uh for the whole year, forty one is at Aspen.
Thank you, girl.
Katie.
Thank you. Um, Marge, thank you for this. Um, this is really helpful to see. Um, I was curious, you know, in the, in the interest of continued growth and in the interest of, you know, making strides towards, you know, the goals that we have about our district and our climate. Um, I wanted to ask if any other districts um potentially use outside um people, consultants, vendors for exit interviews. Um, and I'm just, I'm just thinking, I'm wondering about the the level of comfortability, right, versus talking to like a a kind of neutral third party versus someone in the district. Um, and if if you knew if that was a thing, if it was cost prohibitive, it just.
I don't know anyone who uses an outside.
So all of the other districts.
HR director meetings, um, and.
And everybody does it in-house.
We've, we've shared our exit surveys, we've shared all that, so I think everyone is doing them in-house. Um, even if people don't always meet with me, they'll meet with Barry and Barry and I. So I can, I get some information that way for people who are not totally comfortable being honest. And, you know, education is a small community, so there are people who, you know, don't want to burn a bridge, and so they are not always a hundred percent truthful, but I can get that information sometimes through other channels.
Thank you.
All right, we'll do, move on to the follow-up on action items. Um, the, from September tenth, the only amendment I I'd have is that the board member handbook is in progress. Katie and Julie received the one from Mount Vernon. I also got the one from the new chair handbook from Town that's been shared with them. And then tonight, um, Katie requested from Cass the um the student handbook. Um, so you guys are working together on a process and a timeline. I'll get back with the some next steps. Okay.
You said student handbook, what do you mean, try?
The one that was, went to, goes to Ryan.
Okay, oh.
Same. Uh, visibility into that as well. Um, the action items from tonight, where we're going to schedule either uh we'll send out a poll to see what might work for a special meeting with the lawyer. If not, we'll have him come to the policy meeting. Um, we were looking for some AT ACT science numbers across DIRGs. Um, and then we were looking for some additional um uh CLA by literacy information, uh, the number of students who earned it through coursework versus through um coming to us that way, through through their, through their native language, uh, the number of languages, or excuse me, the the distribution of languages and the DIRG comps. Um, that's all I had for action items. Am I missing anything? Katie.
I just wanted to go back to one from the twenty fourth.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so Alan, thank you for the memo on the sustainable papeterias. Um, um, I I did read through that, and um I appreciated the way that you laid out some of the just the potential decisions that could be facing the board and and kind of the paths forward that um that might be taken. And given that there were um, you know, some special considerations for particular schools and some ways to move it forward, I wanted to request that um that we move that um to the facilities committee for further discussion.
Okay, are people comfortable with that?
I think it's worth having the conversation, yeah.
Okay, all right, we have a motion to move that to facilities. Katie moves, Julie seconds, all in favor? That's unanimous, okay, so that'll go to facilities the next appropriate interval. Okay. Um, and with that, go to public comment.
Good evening. If anyone in person or online would like to participate in public comment, please come up to the podium or use the raised hand icon and wait to be recognized. Please state your name and address for the record, and note that you will have three minutes to comment, and please note the time with the chair.
Okay.
We have one raised hand, sorry.
Yeah. Go ahead, Lindsay.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Hurdy of twenty one hundred Post Road, and I have three kids in the system at Middlesex and Hinley. And I too attended Hinley and Middlesex back in the late eighties and early nineties. And I'm here as a parent on the committee that wants to revive the eighth grade field. And I'm here as a parent on the committee that wants to revive the eighth grade field trip. And we're keen to make it happen for this year's eighth grade class in spring of 2025. Ideally, we envision a two night trip to our nation's capital, DC, just like my sister and I and thousands of other Darien eighth graders have experienced in the past. We also could imagine an educationally and experientially rich experience in Philadelphia. Briefly, I'd like to voice the value of this type of educational travel at the eighth grade level. Well organized and thoughtfully executed field trips foster self-confidence, maturity and an expanded worldview and social perspective, not to mention lifelong memories. Immersive travel for school age kids shapes their growing minds and is a learning accelerator. There are a number of experienced and reputable organizations that we've researched that do this very well, and we imagine partnering with one of them and with a cohort of MMS educators to pull this off. By creating a large scale opportunity like this for students, we're effectively translating what they're learning in the classroom into real world experiences and we'd be inviting them to expand upon their natural curiosities. The experience of walking around inside of history is powerful, eye opening and truly a rite of passage for eighth graders in the US educational system. This particular eighth grade class has lost many major field trip and school sponsored opportunities in the wake of COVID. And we believe it's fitting that they become the inaugural class for the revised vision of what the eighth grade trip can be. We're in close contact with another school system in Massachusetts comparable to Darien that resurrected their eighth grade trip in 2023 and it was an immeasurable success. They have even since made the trip a device free experience for the students, which has improved the quality of the trip even further. I would love to see the board and this community prove that they value learning and growth and social development and intellectual curiosity beyond the walls of our schools by getting behind an experiential, educational two day field trip for this year's eighth grade class and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
If anyone else would like to participate in public comment, please approach the podium or use the raised hand icon. We have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. That's Julie second.